This time, I will call the meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here to this meeting this evening. We have an agenda before us. I'm going to suggest a couple of changes to that agenda. There's been a request to reverse the order of the two public hearings that we have this evening. So if it's okay with the council, we'll have the Block 11 Tax Increment Financing Public Hearing and the Resolution Adoption that will precede the public hearing on Lyon Street. Is that okay with everyone?
Uh huh.
And then I would like to add, as Agenda Item Number 23, appointments to boards and commissions. We'll be making appointments to the Utilities Commission, the Senior Commission, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Are there any other changes? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. So no need to vote. So we'll move then to the first item, which would be consider the approval of the minutes from the work session as well as the regular meeting. Both were held on March 22. The council has the minutes of both of the meetings. Are there any corrections to note?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes of both meetings as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion, are you going to vote?
Abstention.
Okay. The motion does pass with one abstention. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Two, which will be the Block 11 Tax Increment Financing Public Hearing and the Resolution Adoption. I'll call in Sharon Hansen, City Administrator, to conduct this public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members, our EDA Director was not able to help us present, so I'm filling in for her. And we do have a number of slides that we'd like to cover. We also have joining us via Zoom, Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly to add into the presentation. So at this time, would like to have Kyle pull up the presentation materials. So most of you are probably familiar with the location of Block 11. It's the development located near and around Varsity Pub. And if we could switch to the next slide, please. This particular area of our community has been a development, in our development plans for quite some time. So as early as 1996, it was identified as a priority in our development. If you go back one more there, all right. And shortly then, in 2002, there was an acquirement of property purchases by the city. In the next 16 years, there was future additional property purchases by the city. In 2009, there was a request for proposals for development. And then again in 20, can't see that from here, I think it was 2018, we also did a request. And at that time, we had received two, two proposals received, and we proceeded to do a pre-development agreement with Apex out of Mankato that did not see it through to the end. And we had interest by Coldwell Banker Fisher Group and also entered into a pre-development agreement. And here we are today talking about the development at Block 11. Next slide, please. As referenced earlier, this was identified in 1996 as part of a downtown revitalization plan. It's also mentioned in our comprehensive plan from 1996 as a focal point for retail, specialty retail services, and also, you know, and a goal to improve our downtown. As most of you know, we are updating our comprehensive plan, and this is still a goal and focus of downtown for our 2022 plan. Next slide, please. This particular development on Block 11, and we'll show some slides of this shortly, does include some commercial space, but also a focus on residential. And in 2021, the city updated their 2015 housing study, and that housing study indicated a need for additional rental units. And you see the statistics there. I do want to point out for the top half of those statistics, that is just for needs within the city. If we were going to look for housing needs within the region, those numbers would actually be higher than what you see. So we do have the need for residential and rental units validated by the most recent housing study. In addition, the bottom half of those statistics point out the current housing stock. And throughout the 2021 housing study, it has indicated, then to note that some of our rental units is showing age, and the most recent development, of course, happened with unique opportunities, and their Nexus Development, and then also some development by car properties. That has been the most recent rental unit development. Next slide. I'm going to now turn it over to Michaela, and let me just say a few things about tax increment financing, because we are looking, of course, via the Agenda items that were included in your packet, to pursue this development with tax increment financing. And the goal or primary purpose of tax increment financing is to pay for public improvements such as street sidewalks, sewer, or water, which is the case for Commerce and Industrial Park, our most recent development, or to encourage developers to construct buildings or other private improvements. And that is the case here for Block 11. Michaela will talk a little bit about the but-for test, and there is a qualification that, an analysis that needs to occur to ensure that we are meeting the but-for test for tax increment financing. And that was the case for this particular Block 11 development. As most of you know, and evidenced by some of the history, we've put a lot of resources into this block, staff time, financial analysis, and financial resources. The developer also incurs some risk by going forward on this project. So to pursue this development with tax increment financing is really a necessary tool economically for the city of Marshall. So now I'm going to turn it over to Michaela, and she can cover some of the basics of tax increment financing and some data specific to this development.
Thank you, Sharon. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Sharon introduced, I'm going to spend a couple of minutes, just provide an overview of tax increment financing and a little bit more details on the project proposal before you tonight. So again, tax increment financing, it is a tool that communities use to capture the tax-based growth that does result from a new development or redevelopment. And there is a fixed term for the capture of those incremental taxes, to which point the increased new development capacity is added to the existing tax base for the taxing entities. So the tax increment revenues, they're generated by the increased value that's resulted from the development or redevelopment of the project. Slide, please. Here's an illustration. So in this case, you've got the existing value of the property. The taxes that are generated from that base, the existing value, those continue to flow to the city, county, and school district. In this case, because the property is currently tax exempt, there is no taxes that are generated from that, from the property. But once that property becomes taxable, the existing value of that property will start to generate a small amount of taxes immediately for the city, county, and school. And then you'll see here the building that's created as a result of the tax increment financing district. That is what generates the incremental taxes that's captured by the tax increment district established by the city and the HRA to finance the improvements. Next slide, please. So looking long-term, here's another illustration, the green shaded area, that's the base existing taxes. So the taxes generated from that base value, they will stay with the other, with all taxing entities, the city, county, and school. Then through the life of the tax increment district, in this case, we're looking at a maximum 26-year term, the gray shaded area, that's the incremental taxes that are generated from the new development. And those are the taxes that are used to finance the extraordinary and eligible expenditures of the tax increment district. And then you'll see in the kind of chartreuse shaded area, once the tax increment district has been decertified, you'll see there's a significantly higher tax base that has been created as a result following the tax increment district. And then that new higher tax base is what continue, it will be available for all of the city tax base, as well as the county and the school. Next slide, please. When looking at tax increment financing, there are restrictions on the use of the tax increment dollars. And listed here are some of the general and common expenses that we would see. They include public improvements, acquisition, any soil corrections, site grading, site preparation or demolition costs, and really all of the costs that are necessary to correct the blighting conditions of that property and allow it for new development. Next slide, please. When we're looking at tax increment financing, there are two methods that you most often see with financing the costs. The first one is upfront. In this case, the city finances all a portion of the eligible expenses, and that can be done in a couple of different ways. One is through an inter-fund loan. That's where the city advances the funds internally and then uses the tax increment to pay itself, that loan back over time, generally with an interest component. Can also look at issuing bonds, whether they're general obligation or pure revenue bonds. And in that case, again, the city issues the bonds and relies on the future tax increment revenues to repay the debt service on that bond issue. The second method is referred to as pays-as-you-go. And in this case, the developer finances all of the costs upfront, and then a TIFNO would be issued by the city to the developer for financing a portion of the costs that are eligible and deemed extraordinary. And then the developer is reimbursed over time with available tax increment from the project. So when we're looking at the use of tax increment, we, all tax increment districts are established within a project area. And your project area is, it can be the same size as your tax increment district, or it can be larger. In this case, the tax increment district being proposed would be within the city and the HRA's existing redevelopment project area number one. And what that means is that the tax increment dollars are generated from within the specific TIF district in the individual building. And then a portion of the tax income revenues generated from that tax increment district can also be spent within the larger project area if there are eligible costs. In order to create a tax increment district, there is an approval of a tax increment financing plan that includes the budget of projected revenues and expenditures, identifies the geographic boundaries of the tax increment district, as well as the purpose for which that district is being created. And prior to creating the tax increment district, there is a public hearing, which is what the action item is for tonight. And lastly, certification of the district with the county. Next slide, please. So what we're looking at here is a redevelopment district, and that is based on the current conditions of the property. And in order to qualify as a redevelopment district, more than 50% of the buildings in the district are considered substandard, meaning they are a combination of code and condition deficiencies, and at least 70% of the area is occupied. And then along with the redevelopment district, there are certain restrictions on the use of the tax increment dollars. And that is what, see the listing on the right side of different eligible uses, and essentially it's for all the correcting conditions that allowed for designation of the tax increment district. Next slide, please. So as Sharon mentioned, prior to establishing a tax increment district, there are findings that the city needs to make. One is that determination that the project does qualify as a tax increment district, and in this case, as a redevelopment tax increment district. Two, that the project would not proceed but for the use of tax increment financing. And that's an analysis of understanding that the project as proposed, based on the financials, would not be financially feasible without the additional public assistance from the city through the use of tax increment financing to facilitate the redevelopment of the project site. And the last test is that the increased market value of the property to be developed is greater with TIF than if no public assistance is provided. So this, in this particular case, understanding what the level of tax increment revenues are available and how it, the use of those dollars maximizes the valuation of the, on the property post-development. In this slide, this is from the tax increment financing plan. It does include the estimated budget, and you'll see here the total estimated project costs of the district, including land and building acquisition, site improvements, other potential public improvements within the district and the project area, administrative expenses, all equal about $2.6 million. And the projected tax increment revenues generated from the total development at completion are estimated to equal $2.6 million as well. So in this case, the revenues and expenditures within the TIF plan are, again, providing the authority for the city and the HRA to finance the TIF-eligible expenses. So the proposed action items for council tonight would be including the public, holding the public hearing on the consideration of the tax increment district and plan, and then following that to consider the adoption of the resolution approving the modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number one, and the TIF plan for the TIF redevelopment district number 1-15. And following the city council meeting would be similar action item by the HRA to consider adopting the resolution approving the modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number one, and the TIF plan in TIF redevelopment district number 1-15. And the next scheduled meeting on April 26 would be potential consideration of the TIF agreement, which contains the terms, which would contain the terms of the tax increment assistance following the approval of the tax increment plan. So with that, I think, and this is from the tax increment plan, it shows the projected tax increment report with, in column nine is the subtotal of the total tax increment of the $2.6 million, which is reflected in the budget authority. So with that, I think I can turn it back over.
All right. Just a few more slides here, just to introduce the developer for Block 11. It's Coldwell Banker Commercial Fisher Group. They've done a lot of redevelopment in the city of Mankato, up on the hill and in historic downtown Mankato. They have also recently started a construction project similar, somewhat similar to Block 11 project in St. Peter, and have development projects in Redwood Falls and La Sueur in addition to their most development in the city of Mankato. Next slide, please. This is a rough rendering of what they are proposing, and they are proposing to do it over three phases. The first phase would be residential units only, and the second and third would include, in addition to residential units, commercial space development on the first floor of that development. I believe the total residential units is 83 units. Next slide, please. And this is a conceptual rendering of what the residential development will look like in Block 11. We do have a representative from the development, and you may be familiar with John Van Dyke. He was our construction manager, go-to person for City Hall Construction. He has since moved on and is now partnering with Coldwell Banker Group. And I don't know, John, if you wanted to say a few words about the project, or if you had anything to add.
For mayor, do I need to go up there?
You have to go up here.
Yeah, just to restate, John Van Dyke and with Alliance Contracting, and we're working together with Coldwell Banker to develop this site. And my partner, Brian, he's actually worked with Coldwell Banker and built up those malls and is in the process of building out Redwood Falls. So I know that I was connected to this initially through Sharon a couple of years back when I think the Apex proposal expired. So I know that they, you as a city had a desire to develop this, and I think, you know, in talking to the developer, with where they're at, and my expertise more is in construction pricing, and as you know, certainly Jim and the rest of you, inflation now is at 8.5%. That's affecting construction greatly, and also we continue on our projects. All of our projects last longer and cost more now because of lead time concerns with equipment materials. So I know, I just talked to the main partner from Coldwell this morning, and just talked to him about the meeting. He said, yeah, we, you know, we can't afford it without TIF money. So I think that's kind of his perspective. I think we're excited about the idea of doing it. Me as a builder, I'm excited about doing it. I'm excited to use a lot of local subcontractors, which I've been introduced to from various projects that I've done out here. So we've got, some of the main subs are definitely on board and want to see something happen too. But I'm glad to answer any questions if anyone from the council has.
Okay, thank you. Sharon?
Yeah, the remaining slide is just reviewing again, similar to what Michaela presented earlier, what the action requested is tonight, which is to adopt a resolution approving the establishment of project area number one, and then also approving the tax increment financing plan. Subsequent to this meeting will be the HRA meeting. One note to the council packet, in terms of the memo, there was an item number three recommended, which was to approve the contract for private development. And at this time, we're still under a review phase with the developer. Our main contact for Coldwell was out last week, so we'll be visiting with him and going over the development agreement. We don't see any issues. Again, they've had similar arrangements, again, most recently in St. Peter, where they did tax increment financing through and the development agreement there. But just to note that for the record as well, we'll bring that back. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Michaela. Thank you, John, for your presentations. Well, now, as part of the public hearing, open it up for any public comment, either from members of the audience or members of the council who are here.
I have a couple of quick questions. Is there going to be income-based housing in this or workforce housing? There is no workforce housing in this project, then?
The, this tax increment financing, because it is a redevelopment, does not require that threshold.
But we could require that as a city if we're going to finance it.
You could. I don't know, I don't know if the project would move forward.
Well, I know a lot of our studies say that's what we need is workforce housing. I mean, the study after study says that. I guess, and then the second question I have, is this a pay-as-you-go TIF?
Correct. This is a pay-as-you-go TIF.
Yes. And Jim, this is going to be very similar to the unique opportunities without the affordable housing component, but it's a phase-by-phase development. Each phase involves a proportion of that total in tax increment.
Do we happen to have the number that we gave unique opportunity? Was that like 1.2, 1.3 million for their 104, 105 units? Am I right in that number? That's what rings a bell in my mind.
Michaela, do you have that? Or could you find that?
Yep, I'm trying to locate it right now. I think, yeah, before I give an answer, that's not right. Let me look quick.
Okay. The other thing I want to add is that, to that, housing needs is we do need market-rate units as well.
As well as some pre-retirement-type senior, pre-senior housing. Dr. Alphalter?
Yes, Larry Alphalter, Sharon, councilman, mayor. My question, having been in town for 60-some years and downtown for almost 55, my concern, and maybe it's out of light for tonight, to outline the actual things that you're going to be building and the area that's going to be available for parking, wasn't mentioned, but that's my question, because we talk about parking all the time in this town. And I know I was on the Planning Commission back in the 70s, and I know what restrictions we made for that. And when I saw the original plans of this, and it hasn't been mentioned tonight, but I question whether or not you have sufficient. And I don't want to squash the project because it's so necessary, but the businesses that are near this, and may in the future may be near it, if you don't make sure that you have enough parking for the people who are going to be living in these apartments or visiting these apartments. I know when Bremer put theirs up over the bank, they tore down some marvelous homes, three-story homes that had actually areas in the top for meetings and actually dancing and stuff. There's not that here. The homes that are in vicinity of this, and not to knock them, you know that what they look like. So then possibly in the future, you might have to pick up something just to appease the people who are still going to possibly have some businesses within the area. It is something that, as I say, I've only been here a while, and there's going to be a project that's following up with this that I'm going to have something to say about. I won't bring that up tonight because that's in its own project thing, but think about the people out around there, the people on the extra engine property, and bear in mind that you can't just invent property unless you're going to put that two-story parking ramp on it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Alphalter. Jason, you want to quickly address the parking that's being provided as part of this project?
Sure. I can provide a little clarity with the conditional use permit that's already been granted for this project. They are required to have, I believe it's 40 parking stalls with this first phase, which they will have, I believe. That's right in the conditional use permit. I do believe that future project phases will require another conditional use permit if there's residential and parking requirements there. This is in the downtown district, so as a reminder to council, there are no requirements for parking in the downtown district. But of course, there are provisions only to be made for the long-term tenants.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Sharon?
I just want to add a little bit to the parking. The following council agenda item is Lyon Street, and I think in that council packet, it did indicate some additional parking that if that project goes through, will help with Block 11. And in between time and Michaela, correct us if wrong, but our new director of administrative services did locate the tax increment financing amount for unique opportunities, and it was approximately $2 for tax increment financing funds.
Okay, thank you. Other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, go ahead.
Just to understand this, so 1.3 million will go to the developer, and 1.3 million basically comes back to the city. Am I reading that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to consider the resolution that would establish the financing plan and tax increment financing plan. Just a reminder to the council, we are obviously short one council member, so resolutions do need five votes to be approved.
I think we just need four.
Four for the resolution?
Yep, because it's affirmative of the quorum.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. Okay, are there questions about the resolution?
I move the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion on the motion?
The only thing I, it's a needed project. I don't like the fact that we don't have market rate housing in it. I thought when this started, part of this was to be market rate housing. I believe that was part of the proposal by Apex. Am I wrong in saying that?
What are you talking about?
I understand that, but when this whole-
Well, you say market rate, but I think you're meaning affordable.
Affordable housing, excuse me, affordable housing. Thank you, John. It doesn't have any affordable housing part to it. I'd 100% support this if it had some type of affordable housing aspect to it. As of now, we're giving tax dollars to charge full value on these properties, and we leave that whole aspect out. And I believe our housing report said we need affordable housing. That's what I've heard that we really need.
Well, we need affordable housing basically all the way through the scale, so that's what was presented earlier.
Let me just indicate that the first request from this developer was property tax abatement, and that was due to the thought that the requirements of tax increment financing and potentially some requirement such as requiring subsidized or lower-income residential units, that was not something that they wanted to do with this development. These are going to be, no offense to Unique, but a little higher end, and they wanted to pursue it with market rate. The city, however, really wanted them to pursue tax increment financing due to the fact of our resources and investment in this property and to recoup that investment. The only feasible way to do that would be through tax increment financing. If we did it through tax abatement, we would not likely have been paid for the land, and you'll see that as part of the tax increment financing plan. We are getting paid for the land. If it was tax abatement, I don't know if we would have been able to recoup that. Some of the other factors of tax increment, and I think it was mentioned, and we're at 1.3, is we have other redevelopment requests in downtown. And to have future flexibility in terms of how we pay for that other redevelopment, we really need to have this tax increment financing. So I can't say for certain that this deal would not go through if there is a requirement for a certain percentage of subsidized or lower-income housing, but I think it would be at risk. And we'd have to go back to the developer and see if it would move forward.
Just if I can add in a comment on that, I do think, yes, we do need affordable housing, but at the same time, by providing some market rate housing, that does with the intent, genuinely it can happen, is that frees up some homes, like Mayor had mentioned, this may be for some senior living that is pre-assisted living kind of thing, where somebody just wants to live someplace that doesn't require the maintenance, and then their house comes up for sale or whatever, referred to as naturally occurring affordable housing. So you get a shift of, you know, somebody into a market rate, freeing up something that is affordable. You do need to provide a wide gamut of homes in order to get this. It's great to have affordable housing all the way through, and we do need that. But we also need to provide some higher-end living so we can get some people essentially moving out of their single-family homes and be able to not have to take care of it, allowing other families to move into a lower-cost housing.
But if you're only required 20% of the units to be part of the affordable housing, doesn't the project then solve both those problems?
I, you know, that'd be a question back to Michaela or something, because what the dollar amount would do on that, I couldn't say.
Greg? Yeah, and just talking specifically about the conversations on Block 11, starting with the proposal that came in from Apex in our discussions here, I don't ever recall this portion of development when we're looking at housing as having been with an affordable housing element with it. I always thought it was to meet that higher end, that what I always call transition housing. And I always viewed it as the new or the younger people coming back that were from here that are coming back with their wives and young families and looking, is this something we want to transition to? And that I consider that transition housing for professional people at that level coming to kind of get a feel for Marshall and spend a year or two years, and is this someplace I want to put a feeder root in and develop and build a house and stay here? That's, I've never thought of this as being part of that affordable housing piece, and I honestly don't remember it being part of that conversation.
Well, if they're bringing their families back, you'd have more than mostly one-bedrooms, too. This is mostly one-bedroom units.
I understand that, but to talk about the initial, the original discussion that we had, I don't ever recall this being part of that affordable housing piece, you know, similar to what, you know, Suite Living is proposed and, you know, what our other developments are.
The one other thing we'll mention, too, and I'm glad you asked about unique opportunities and the amount of TIF, similar amount of units, a little bit higher, but their TIF was higher. And I think if we were looking at doing a housing tax increment financing, I think the amount of TIF provided to the developer would raise as well, and it could be up to the $2 million mark. We'd have to look at what would be eligible expenses under a redevelopment TIF. They are limited by statute on what is an eligible expense. So in some ways, we are kind of controlling it on the incentive side by doing this. But I want to reiterate again, I'm not sure the project would go forward if there was a requirement of subsidized housing as part of this project.
The other, good discussion. The other point that I would add to this is that, you know, while we're focused on the one use here, you know, if we go back to the 1996 comprehensive plan and 1996 study, since at that time, it identified this block that had a number of properties that were either zoned improperly or were in transition, and there was multiple properties. There were some that were no longer in use, the Marshall Foods, Marshall Egg Warehouse, Haugie Egg was in transition, Echo Water relocated. There was this, the former gas station that was then a Safelife glass. There was the Middleton property. So there was a number of properties that were all, we knew that in the next 20 to 30 years would need to be redeveloped, probably removed. And that's what the investment of the city was. And I think all along with the RFP, both that the Apex responded to and then the Fisher Group responded to, was really trying to match an investment in a development that would meet the needs of downtown and provide that investment, provide that ultimate vibrancy in what will be a mixed-use of housing, but there also will be some commercial uses within this development, too. So I would speak in favor of considering this resolution. Other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So my question, and maybe Michaela, or maybe Sharon, or maybe John, you know, this is, we're going into inflationary times. We're going into, people are talking all sorts about recession coming down the line. What is the risk of the city if this project doesn't fall through? I know it's less with a pay go.
Do you want to comment on that, Dennis?
It is a phased development, yes, and all of these numbers are based upon all three phases being constructed. But there are provisions in the development agreement. It is basically a pay-as-you-go by the phase. So phase one is completed, and then there are timelines in there. But if construction does not occur, or if it does not occur timely, we claw it back. The property comes, the undeveloped portion of that would come back to the city, and obviously, tax increment financing payments would be lessened as we go. So there are those provisions in there. And that's everybody's big concern, what if? What if phase two, phase three doesn't happen?
Let me also add, just for recent memory, because of unique opportunities, because it's a pay-as-you-go, they have to validate their expenses. So they actually submit invoices. Our city attorney reviews those, makes sure that it's compliant with the development agreement and state statute. And before any check is cut by the finance department, it has to meet the development agreement and statute, and Dennis verifies that the invoices match the TIF notes.
Right. The development costs, the eligible costs have to exceed the amount of the TIF note. So that's what we're verifying. So, but we do have the reversionary clawback provisions in there. If the phases are not all completed, portions come back.
And then there's no TIF on there? Or is it still in TIF then, and we'd have to-
The completed portion is still eligible for TIF.
But the uncompleted portion would be ineligible.
It's ineligible for TIF, I mean, without development. It's still owned by the city. It's still, you know, no taxes. It's not-
Because what I'm thinking of is, you know, we're looking at this as a return on the investment. So you want to get that return on investment, but that's a long way down. That's, what did Michaela say, 23 years, 26 years?
26.
That's a long time, and we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and that's good if the return on investment gets there because that growth is exponential, and we can get it. And that's the goal. But that's 26 years down, you know. So it's tough, especially with all the uncertainty.
Well, to be eligible for the TIF, it has to, the development has to occur within five years of the approval of the district. So we're looking at, you know, five-year time period to develop each of the three phases.
Right.
So your investment is upfront, yes. You're not waiting for the completion 26 years from now. You're looking at the completion.
Right. Soon.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, sorry, you're right. As everything said before you, with it being, you know, the way that the terms of the agreement are structured right now, you know, the city would retain, would pledge and or retain 50% of the annual increment. So 50% of the increment would be pledged to the developer, and it would be by phase to total the 1.3 million. And as both Dennis and Sharon said, they would be subject to the requirements of the timing and so on for each phase of development, and they would have to show proof of incurring those costs. And then with the remaining 50%, that provides the city with the ability to recoup its investment of acquiring and preparing that, acquiring the site and assembling it for redevelopment. So as you'll see when you get into the terms of the agreement, that's how it's structured, is, again, with the pay-as-you-go, it reduces the risk to the city, and then with being able to recoup, retain a portion of the increment to repay for the land, that's where the tax increment does provide additional revenues to, if you make the city whole, if you will, with the initial investment, plus the new development.
Sharon?
Let me, I'm sorry I keep adding to this, but I do want to talk a little bit about the length. You know, currently, the city owns this property. There is no property taxes being paid. So in order to get that return on investment, we have to make something happen. And, you know, it is a long-term tax increment financing, but by year 2025, we're garnering property taxes being paid, and the current value is $365,000. You know, in 2026, it's $3 million. So it, there is increment happening long before the 25 years. It's almost immediate, and I know that the developer wants to start construction as soon as possible. I know John mentioned some of the reasons why, but they've been pretty anxious to start for quite some time. So I think in a short period of time, we'll, well, I know we will if their development occurs based on the tax increment financing plan.
Okay.
Discussion, go ahead.
If the TIF is, if we raise the 1.3, or if they pay the 1.3 million early, it's not necessarily 26 years. It's, 26 years are $1.302 million, correct? So if they get their TIF of 1.3 million in, let's say, 16 years, because property values shoot up, then we're done with that TIF in 16 years.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Other, any other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll move us to a vote on the motion on the resolution. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next public hearing. And that'll be a public hearing related to the Lyon Street College to First reconstruction. I'll call on Jason Anderson to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed street and utility reconstruction project on West Lyon between College Drive and North First Street. This block was actually scheduled originally by our staff to be completed last year with the other streets in the North First Street reconstruction project. But we pulled it from the project because the Block 11 development was still up in the air, and we wanted to make sure that we were developing and improving the roadway in a manner that could be used to its fullest with this new development. So now that we're seeing the Block 11 development moving forward, staff would like to go forward with the reconstruction on this block. We have an engineer's estimate for the project at $338,000. If you add in some contingency and engineering fees at this point in time, our estimate's $432,000. As we finish our plans and get them ready for bid, we'll tighten that up. But all improvements would be proposed to be assessed with the current special assessment policy. That means that participating utilities would pay their share, and then we would assess accordingly to adjacent residential and commercial properties, and the city ad valorem would pay a share as well. I guess I think that's all we've got here, but I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Is there, thank you, Jason. I'll open up for any input or questions as part of the public hearing on this project. Ron? For the record, Ron, we'll have you identify your name and your address.
My name is Ron Schelling, and I'm the owner of one of the properties along that street. And I see the dovetailing of these two projects very essential, because if you look at the map, and I'm not, you know, make sure that you know that I realize that some of the costs do get assessed back to adjacent property owners. No question, no qualms about that. But regarding those, I would not want to be the person who has to figure out how to assess this street if the Block 11 project is not- figure out how to assess this street if the Block 11 project is not going through. Because if you look at the, at the property, there's a couple of experienced houses along one end, a couple of empty lots, there's a marginal commercial building, and then the end of my commercial building, which quite frankly, doesn't get services off the street, except for a driveway. And I just want to say that, that I'm wondering if doing the project, if there's any indication that the Block 11 is not a certainty, it would be very difficult, and I think burdensome on the city, to not have anybody, actually, that's an overstatement, but not to have enough people to bear an assessment.
I think that's a very good point, and Jason, I think that's the reason why you requested to have this public hearing following the previous public hearing. It cleared up a lot of my questions.
All right.
All right, thank you, Ron. Other input as part of the public hearing?
Jason, just a clarification, because this council has talked about narrowing streets a lot. We're actually making this street one foot wider, is that correct?
So, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman. As I look at the layout that was included in the feasibility report that we included with this council packet, that was done a few months ago, and as we since talked about at PAT today, this probably, we probably will not go forward with angled parking on both sides of the road to make sure that we get enough street width in there to make it feel comfortable. It'll probably be parallel on one side and angled on another side. So, we'll continue to develop that. But I believe the width will actually be, when we go parallel and angle, I believe it'll be narrowed by a couple of feet. But you were correct in that, in the feasibility report, at time of drafting this, the road was about a foot wider than what it was in the existing condition. Now, we'll probably be three or four feet narrower.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, I'll move.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to consider the resolution that would order the improvement and the preparation of the plans.
So, I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting.
Just wait.
Yeah, okay.
And the motion does pass. Just in time, Craig.
That's the story of my life.
Move to Agenda Item Number Four. This would be considered the award of the proposal for the wastewater sanitary manhole sealing and relining project. Jason? Jason Anderson, Public Works and City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Our wastewater department has been relining sanitary sewer manholes for the past few years now, and our collection team goes out and they do review on the condition of the deeper manholes. Typically, these have been on our 1993 trunk line that runs around the perimeter of the city. But upon the review, we find that there's some manholes that are deteriorating due to hydrogen sulfide attack due to long residence times in the pipe system. But they've done a good job of outlining different repair areas, and these lining projects extend the life of the manholes significantly. And because most of these manholes that we're looking at are 18 to 30 feet deep, they're very expensive replacements. So, we found a product that we like, and it's been going very well, and we budget money for this in the wastewater budget annually. And this year's project is at $34,168, and we would like Council to consider approving that. And Scott Trudson, our wastewater superintendent, is here as well, if you've got more questions for him.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Scott, anything you wanted to add?
Pretty much covers it.
Are there any questions the council has?
Just a question, Jason, or Scott. Prices up considerably over last year, or about the same?
It goes by the foot.
So, welcome, Scott Trudson, the wastewater superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The price is by the foot, and as Jason mentioned, a lot of these manholes are deeper. So, really, the price hasn't changed much, except for sometimes we do shallower manholes, we do more of them. This particular round, there's some deeper manholes ranging from 19 to 20 feet. So, it's just an easier way to do this.
And the location of these, the Highway 23...
Yeah, two of them are, one's by Marshall Spa and Pool, one's by AP Design. Those are 19 and 20 feet deep. They have a lot of pipes coming into them, so it makes it more difficult if you're going to replace them. Another one is out by our Northwest Industrial Lift Station. It's a drop manhole. So, basically, as the wastewater drops in there, it does gas off, producing hydrogen sulfide. So, those are the ones that we're trying to target.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. I'd entertain a motion.
I move approving the award of proposal for the wastewater sanitary manhole sealing project. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda we'll bring up on the screen at this time. So, on the consent agenda, consider the approval of a consumption display license for Southwest Minnesota State University. Consider the approval of temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Holy Redeemer Church. Date is August 17, 2022. Consider two applications for exempt permits for Holy Redeemer Church. Consider an application for exempt permit for Marshall Fire Department Relief Association. Consider the application for exempt permit for Knights at Columbus. Consider the approval of a transient merchant license for TNT fireworks. Consider authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for Marshall Police Department. Consider the declaration of signage as surplus item, and consider that as a donation to the Marshall Public Schools. Consider the request of Shades of the Past Car Club, June 3, 2022 Cruise, and June 4, 2022 Car Show. Consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property from Sounds of Summer, the call for a public hearing for the private use of public streets and parking lots for the Sounds of Summer, August 18 to 21. Consider the approval of the service agreement for the concession air at Amateur Sports Complex. And finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 18. This is the ordinance that would amend the city code for access management. The action would be to consider the adoption of the ordinance. Now, this was also on the agenda at the last regular council meeting, and there's only four individuals that were, were present at that time, and it did not achieve four votes. And the recommendation of the four people at the council at that time was recon, I don't want to say reconsider, but bring this back for consideration at this meeting when there is the, all of the current members of the council are present. So, that was, that was the intent on bringing it back this evening. With that, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we can give a brief introduction to this ordinance again. So, this is an ordinance that describes the requirements for materials and geometrics of driveways in the city right-of-way. So, driveways that are located in the city right-of-way. This does not deal with driveways on private property or anything of that nature. But really, this is just trying to limit the, the number and size of driveways and what materials they're constructed out of. This is, these are common ordinances to have in municipalities across the state of Minnesota. It's not something that's atypical, but it is something that we haven't, we haven't had. So, benefits of having some of these limitations for limiting space and width between driveways is typically safety enhancements. You reduce vehicle pedestrian interaction areas, you limit street access and conflict points, you can help ensure good gutter drainage by not having a bunch of curb cuts in there where people maybe don't kind of inhibit the flow, reduce unnecessary stormwater runoff, and you can help ensure compliance with ordinance requirements for grass cover, those, those types of things. And also, you can maintain the character of a neighborhood by not having large, really overly large driveways. So, this item was brought to the PAT Committee on January 25. It was brought to LNO on March 1. Both committees generally recommended to bring it to council for consideration. I believe it was LNO, at the LNO committee meeting, that Councilman Lozinski suggested that we consider allowing bituminous paving materials in the right-of-way and not just specify concrete as the ordinance does in its current written form. So, that would be maybe something for the council to consider. But staff does have it as concrete at this point in time. Some, some typical things that would be in here, residential driveway limited to 36 feet of width, which is pretty much if you took a three-stall garage and came straight down to the curb, that's roughly 36 feet. That would be allowed. Bigger than that, it would not be explicitly written. Distances from intersections, for example, you shouldn't be closer than 25 feet to an intersection for a residential driveway. I think we've got 40 feet for a commercial. Just things like that to ensure proper spacing for safety. There is a variance process that goes to the city engineer, and if you disagree with the city engineer's judgment, then you can take it to council. So, that's the...
And the other part of it would be in, in new developments, that the, in a previous action, the sidewalk requirement is actually wider than what was previously. So, this makes it consistent with the five-foot sidewalk attached to the approach. And in practicality, there may be some concern or people that it's, the width restriction is, is restrictive, but in practicality, that is 36 feet, and rarely in a residential district would you run into a, someone putting in a driveway that would be wider than 36 feet.
36 feet is very wide. We have streets that are 36 feet wide, and that's just limiting the, the width in the right-of-way. That doesn't mean that you couldn't go wider behind the sidewalk. So, there's, there is that. We're just limiting that space in the right-of-way.
Okay. Input, discussion?
Well, Jason brought up my name. So, I just want the option. I don't like it, and actually, Dr. Meister and I had this conversation earlier today, overregulation. And that's why I think there should be option for bituminous. It's also possibly cheaper. I don't know what the cost difference is. Usually, asphalt is cheaper. And I'd even go as far as saying that we could do pavers, just a hard surface. I don't like to tell our residents, you have to use concrete. I'd like to have them have their options to their property, to their house.
Now, okay, just, we do have the requirement, I think from our discussion, that the, that the sidewalk, be a sidewalk that goes through this driveway. That sidewalk needs to be concrete.
And that...
There are sections of town that do not have sidewalks.
That, and that's very true.
There's a lot of sections of towns that do not have sidewalks.
And, and say, I, I agree with the, the requirement that that sidewalk be concrete. The driveway approach, although I think it would be impractical to do asphalt at that section, I would agree that I don't want to eliminate the possibility if somebody wants to do that. I don't see that it's going to be cost-effective to do it at this point. But as you mentioned, in, in areas where there is no sidewalk, it may be advantageous to just do the entire driveway in asphalt. I, you know, obviously, it's not going to last as long, but that's part of the owner's requirements. So, my take on this is, you know, if there is a sidewalk through it, that needs to be concrete. But as far as the rest of it being bituminous or asphalt, that's, I'm okay with that.
Well, and currently, we have some, especially commercial properties, apartments, that have asphalt all the way out to the street, so.
Sure. If I may just say one thing regarding that, I think staff is open to that, and that's, and that's okay. I agree with Councilman De Kramer that if there is sidewalk present, we really want to ensure that that's concrete, so we can help ensure ADA guidelines are met. We have that responsibility in the right-of-way, and I'm not saying you can't do it with blacktop, but we would prefer to use concrete to make sure that we're, we're being consistent and meeting standard. I, I think I would take exception to pavers in the right-of-way, because if we do work in the right-of-way, it may be rare, but I don't want to be disrupting that, and now city or another utility is having to expend an inordinate amount of money to put that back in a condition that satisfies the property owner when it's on our right-of-way. So, I'd be a little concerned with pavers.
Since our last meeting, which I was pretty adamant about having concrete, it was interesting on our rental ordinance meetings, I had a few people come up to me and say, how come you don't want to allow asphalt? And I said, I just don't think it's practical. I said, I think it's probably going to be kind of hard to find a bituminous contractor to come in and do, whether it's 36 feet wide or 10 feet wide and do that. But I said, if that's what you want, I said, I'll change my opinion. I just, and give you that option of doing it. And they said, and then one question that was kind of interesting to me, he said, how about if I did my whole driveway asphalt, the present sidewalk is concrete, and I continued the asphalt over the concrete? And I said, I don't think you'd be able to do that. I, but I said, I'm not an engineer for the city, so I don't think I could give you the yes or no. But I said, you could have the driveway asphalt stop, and then have the approach asphalt, as far as, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay.
And I think the issue with going over it is you may have ADA issues. You may create a hump or a bump in there that's not compliant, and now we have trouble with that. But, you know, it probably isn't as practical to do the blacktop paving between the sidewalk and the curb. But if in a neighborhood like Councilman Lozinski suggested that doesn't have sidewalk, it probably becomes practical. So, it's probably okay to leave that in there as an alternative. We were more thinking, we're always thinking of our ideal situation, so we're always thinking about sidewalk and curb, and how does this work? But it's good to maybe allow some flexibility.
Any other input or discussion?
I agree with Councilmember Lozinski. I think if we're going to make an ordinance, we let as much decision-making be left to the property owner within reason. So, as long as we vote, as long as the ordinance has it that we can allow bituminous or concrete, I'm okay.
So, question for it. How does this work then, when we're doing a street project, and we have our standard package of when we do driveway approaches? Are we going to cost-share with bituminous then?
That's a really good question that I don't know that anybody's really thought much about. I think our standard would be to have concrete driveways in our reconstruction projects. I think if a property owner came out to contest that and really push, I want, you know, blacktop, we could probably work to quote that and show them some numbers. I think on our reconstruction projects, it'll be advantageous to use concrete.
Sure. And I'm fine. I mean, if the homeowner, if they're doing all that work themselves, if it's a new creation or whatever, and the city's not sharing in that cost, if they want to use bituminous, you know, I, I believe in people being able to do what they think is practical on their property without injuring someone else. And I just don't want to paint us in a corner as a city to have to figure out how to pound that peg into the opposite-shaped hole, but we can make this work.
Okay. Any other input? If not, I'd entertain a motion related to this ordinance. Motion to adopt.
I make motion to adopt this ordinance, where it includes both concrete and bituminous.
Just, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Now, discussion on the motion. Since this is an ordinance, so this one does take five votes.
And just to be clear, though, if there is a sidewalk that is concrete?
I believe that's already written in the ordinance, correct?
I just want to make sure that, that's clear in there.
Four for resolutions and ordinances. We only had four members at the last meeting, so it would not have been a requirement of five. We need four.
Very good. Thanks. Thanks once again. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. Agenda item number 19, the MPCA Chloride Reduction Grant. The action would be to consider the authorization to utilize the wastewater funds for the grant match, and then the second action would be the agreement with Bolton and Mink. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This isn't, this item's not new to the council. We've talked about this, I think, at least a few different times. Bolton and Mink has been awarded a grant through the MPCA, a chloride reduction grant. They're going to work with the cities of Worthington and Marshall. The grant requires a 25% match, so out of the $250,000, it'll be split evenly amongst the two cities. We'll each have to come up with our 25% match, and the dollars will likely go towards some form of rebate program for water softener adjustment. There may be some rebates for softener replacement if you've got a very old or outdated model. We have to work out the formalities of the program yet. We have a meeting scheduled for next week, a kickoff meeting with Bolton and Mink, Worthington and Marshall. We'll be meeting here at our beautiful City Hall, so it'll be nice to do that. But it requires a $31,250 investment from the city. That'll be split between MMU and the wastewater department's budgets, so that'll be a nice cost share there. Just want to point out one thing with this grant agreement that we're bringing forward for signature. The way the grant is written and the way the relationship is with the PCA, the city of Marshall will have to expend all of the funds, I think it's just over $156,000, out of our own budget, and seek reimbursement through the PCA. So once we take on expenses and make payments, we will work with Bolton and Mink to get reimbursement, up to $125,000, and that would leave us with our remaining $31,000 cost. So it's just the way it goes, but we've worked that out with our finance team here. We won't have a problem doing that. Just want to point that out, that the agreement does say that we will outlay all the payments and seek reimbursement. If there's any questions, we can try to answer them. Once again, Scott Trudson from our wastewater utilities here, and if we have any questions about chlorides or current levels, that could be part of the conversation as well.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Open up for any questions. John?
My first question is, where are we at on the chloride levels?
And Scott, you may want to also talk about the new permit requirements, too.
Sure, sure. As far as the chloride levels go, we've settled down. We're probably about the 300, 350 range. We're supposed to be down to 261, so we're not there yet. I have been calling around to local businesses, following up on a list that Bob Benmore started last year, talking to businesses about, you know, have they set their softeners down? So kind of that's ongoing. So we're not there yet, I guess, for the chlorides. For the permit, we've got our letter of new limits. We've got that at the beginning of the month. There's about six different things, new limits that the MPCA wants us to address, so we're going into, hopefully, an agreement. This will come to the council next time, but we need assistance in Bolton and Mink and Messer in order to answer some of these questions. They want an answer in 30 days. We're going to extend that out to 90 days, hopefully, so we'll be working on that.
And one of those components of the limits is chloride.
Correct.
And I guess that's the reason for the question, really, is we're not there yet. We know we need to get there, and it will probably cost us, if this wasn't for this grant, it would cost us something, probably considerably more to
Yeah.
work out a program to do that. So this is kind of a, yeah, thank you, thank you kind of thing, because it's helping finance our means of getting there without using all of the city's dollars. We have to put something in it, of course, but, you know, that's a pretty good return on that.
Correct. Hopefully, this will get us closer to the target, so.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. If there's no other questions, the recommendation is the authorization to utilize the wastewater funds for the grant agreement match.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I just don't like the idea that we have to pay for the whole thing out front. Is that budgeted, EJ? I don't think it is.
My understanding is it's not budgeted. We didn't know for sure this was going to come up this year, but there are funds available with wastewater to flow the money to make it work.
The only problem I have is you spend the money, and then we all know how the state of Minnesota, how quickly they reimburse. So we pay today, we don't get our money for three years, and then we're in a, we're in a problem again, where we're now expended something, we don't have the money, and who ends up paying? Well, EPA says they're going to keep paying us, but then the state doesn't have their money, and we're out, so I'm a little concerned about that.
If I may, Councilman Meister, I think that, I understand that concern, but I think with these types of grant programs, the state is pretty good about turning those over. It's dollars in hand that they have to disperse, and they have a limited period of time. Interesting thing about this grant, you might remember this came up on us kind of quick, and we just threw it on an agenda one day because we had to get an application in.
Right.
I think that was because there wasn't a lot of applications for this grant, and the PCA really wanted to get it out. And once again, if they don't use these grants, they don't get that money appropriated, and they don't get to try to get that benefit out there. So I think that, I think the money is there. I think it will get dispersed on a monthly basis. I feel confident in that. So I understand the concern, but I don't think we'll have to wait more than one to two months to get reimbursement. I'll say that.
You want to stake your job on that?
I don't, I don't know if I'm that confident.
Well, and their requirement is they want to be sure the work is done.
Right. Correct, and that's the point of having Bolton and Mink help us with this. They've got the staff time that they'll be paid to really dedicate to putting together the data and the statistics that the PCA is going to require. A big part of this is just tracking what we're doing and the result that we're getting to proof of concept, if you will, for the PCA.
Okay. Thank you.
And historically, these are typically either legacy fund grants or federally administered enticements that are passed down through EPA to PCA, so they're earmarked, and it's not something that if PCA figures out how to not to pay them out to the municipalities or other participants, they don't get to mark them for something else. They're dedicated funds that they actually have to account for and justify. So it's really in their best interest to get the projects in and get the money off their plate, because that's how they're measured in performance. It's not by sitting on it, it's by getting it out.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. Move then to...
You want the agreement with Bolton and Mink?
The second part then would be the agreement with Bolton and Mink.
I'll move that.
To Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. Now we'll move to the action to call for a public hearing for the Small Cities Development Grant Project Update. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council is being asked to call for a public hearing for the Small Cities Development Grant. This is a requirement for that project. That will, that must be held partway through the project, so representatives will be at the next regular council meeting to provide that update to you.
And this is really a closure of that, of that project, which is a requirement of the grant?
Yes.
Is there a motion to call for that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll note one abstention. Agenda item number 21, consider the approval to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute to consider strategy for union negotiations. Following the closed session, we will come back into open session. This time, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes.
Yeah. That's okay.
At this time, I'll bring us back into open session. We are on agenda item number 22. Agenda item number 22, consider the approval of the labor agreements between the city of Marshall and law enforcement labor services, the local number 190. This is a result of conversations with that bargaining unit and to report on those conversations and to make a recommendation, I'll call on human resources director for the city of Marshall, Sheila Dubs. Sheila?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff met in negotiations with the LALS Patrol Group on March 29th to begin negotiations on a new contract. We were able to reach tentative agreement at that meeting. So before you this evening is a contract that the union group has ratified. I will briefly review the changes in that agreement, and we'll be able to address any questions that you have. The dates throughout the agreement reflect a three-year duration of 2022, 2023, and 2024. The dates have been updated in multiple locations. In Article 6, the grievance procedure is recommended to be amended to exchange the term "business" for calendar dates. Additional language is also defining the term "business days" as well as one additional term to comply with Minnesota State statute that pertains to a new arbitrator selection procedure for peace officers. In Article 20, the vacation, a section of a clause has been added that does indicate that in order to be eligible for a vacation pay at retirement or resignation, the officer does need to retire, needs to submit a two-week notice, which means that they are retiring or resigning in good standing. In Appendix A, that relates to the wage, wages package for the '22, '23, and '24 years. The union has accepted the new pay structure that was approved by the council and has agreed to implementate, to an implementation plan that is consistent with what the council approved for non-union employees. The wage schedules reflect the following general wage increases. For 2022, a 2%. For 2023, a 3%. And for 2024, a 3%. There are two additional memorandums of understanding. One is a memorandum of understanding, and one is a memorandum of agreement. One of those simply date changes in that, updating the effective dates of each of the respective general wage increases for each of the years of the contract. And the final memorandum of agreement is regarding the accrual of compensatory time. Both the union and the city have agreed to continue that with just date changes, no other changes to that language for this contract. With that, I would open it up to any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the labor agreement with, between the city of Marshall and law enforcement labor services.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll bring us to a vote on that motion. And we'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Sharon, for your work on this, as well as Attorney Hanson. We'll move then to the item that was added to the agenda. This would be the appointments to boards and commissions. The council did meet in special session prior to this meeting, and based on that meeting, I would recommend that Fran Andrajewski be appointed to the Adult Community Center Commission for a term that will expire May 31, 2025, that Catherine Schlegel be appointed to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for a term that will expire December 31, 2024, and that Cindy Friscotsey be reappointed to a second term on the Marshall Municipal Utilities Commission. That term will expire May 31, 2027. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Mayor, can we do a voice vote for this action item?
By voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on then to commission board liaison reports. From my part, the Regional Development Commission will meet this coming Thursday, Thursday of this week. I do represent the Regional Development Commission on the MinDOT ATP-8, and we did have a meeting earlier this month where the 2025 projects that received federal funding were approved, and of course, that includes some in this area, including the shoulder widening of Highway 68, which that construction will start this shortly, as well as the 2025 Highway 19 project. Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees did meet early this morning, received a quarterly report from the fund manager, which is Bremer, and the quarterly performance, not surprisingly, reflects what has happened with the market in the quarter, so the performance was down 6.6%. The, in addition to that, the, there's some, there was one retirement, so there's a large withdrawal, and they anticipate there'll be several more in 2022, so that'll bring that fund down also. So in one sense, when there's a down market, that's a good time to pay out, and on the other hand, they do, this is similar to what happened in 2018 when there was a market adjustment, as well as a large number of retirements that happened at that time, and then the fund did recover after that. With that, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The airport commission did meet last week, and Jason, you can help me out if there's anything critical I missed here, but most of it was just doing some updates on other things that the council has already discussed also, and that's progress on the new building maintenance and just the funding, how the funding moves through with MinDOT Aviation or Aeronautical. And then talking again about, you know, what are our capital projects? You know, what are we looking at for airport runway maintenance, potential runway expansion, looking at our rezoning, you know, and looking at getting that group back together and just moving forward to make sure that we keep progressing forward on some of the potential upgrades and things happening at the airport. We also had continuing discussions about our need to figure out what our fueling capabilities and infrastructure is going to be there. So a lot of it was just more of discussion and update on how to move forward, and then, of course, there was the, there's the, always the perpetual conversation about where are we at with Helena? So is there anything else that I missed, Jason, that I should really update the council on?
No, I think that's really good. We're very close to having our SRE pre-scoping, pre-designed study completed. I've got some preliminary documents that came in late this afternoon, so I may have some council items to come forward. We'll kind of parse through that over the next week.
Awesome. Thank you, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Craig. And from my report, I neglected to say the planning commission does meet tomorrow evening. Steve?
Cable Commission did not meet. Community Services Advisory Board met. We changed our chair to Renee Subey. A lot of discussion on the pool, which is still figuring out where we're going to put it, and all that is kind of inherent on legislative stuff, which is stalled out in the Senate right now. Hopefully, we'll hear from that by the end of, end of April, and that's about it.
Thank you, Steve. John?
The only committee that met, where ever since last meeting, was diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we had a discussion where, was formed a subcommittee for welcoming week coming up and presumably in September, and also the, just discussion around Worldfest, which is occurring out at Red Baron on April 30th. That's about it. Kyle, I think I need to check with you when the Public Housing Commission meets, because I'm not aware, I didn't look it up, and I probably should have, but not sure when it is.
Okay, thank you, John. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CVB will meet on Thursday. Adult Community Center will meet tomorrow, and the Area Transit meets next week. Library Board did... tomorrow, and the Area Transit meets next week. Library Board did meet last evening, and we, Michelle presented the classification and compensation study to the board, and what effect that will have on the budget this year, as well as 2023. No action was taken on adopting that study at this point. We also talked about the timeframe with the 2023 budget and conversations that may have, may or may not have happened with the county regarding the contract. But for the time being, we are going to assume that Michelle will start the budget process in May. With, with the board, we'll preview it in, in May. June meeting will be a tentative approval end of June, and maybe a joint meeting with the county and, and the city and everybody. And then July, board, board meeting with changes. So pending any changes to that contract, you know, we'll just go from there. They also brought up, and I, I guess I don't know much about it, maybe Sharon or somebody else has, but the things that are going on in Pipestone with the library and the school, I guess that's quite contentious down there. But, yeah, because the school kind of wants them out, and
I don't know why.
It's, it's an ongoing issue. So I guess we have to be thankful we have the situation we have with the library. And even though we may not agree with the county, or they may not agree with us, at least we're not kicking each other out of the building. So, yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
I couldn't attend men when they met.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, we'll start with you then.
I only have one thing, and it's to give, you know, we always like to complain, but I also like to give credit where credit is due. I spent Sunday with my neighbor Mitch Maxwell, who's a baseball coach, and he was all worried about baseball games on Monday. He says, I don't think we'll get to play. And lo and behold, Preston and his crew got all three fields ready to play. So all three of those teams from ninth grade, the B squad, the varsity, got their games in yesterday. And, you know, I was visiting with Preston about, about 2:00. He says, you know, it was a lot of work. And I said, you know, we got three teams in town. We got the kids playing. It was well worth it. And he agreed. And I give his crew credit that they got that field ready in one day, and those high school kids got to play baseball yesterday. It was actually their first, they've never practiced outside. So that was their first game, their first practice outside, and Preston and his crew did a great job. So.
Very good. Russ?
Maybe just for time constraints, but maybe at a future meeting. Kyle, can we get an update on enterprise? How that's going, and if it's not going, or what our options are, all that? Maybe at a future meeting. That's all I have.
John?
And I'm just gonna bounce them off. I've been, one of these things that we meet at meetings, but don't get a chance to talk afterwards, Jason. But just if you could, in your engineering report, give an update where we're at with the Broadmoor construction contract thing, or whatever you're out after as far as the engineering goes, so.
Okay. I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Steve?
Likewise.
I have two things. One, you know, we're, there's a number of alarms that went off this evening. So obviously, we have some weather going on, which really kind of brings up the point of, of what's our emergency plan for meetings and when we're in session. And so, not that we need to discuss it tonight, but
Windos blow out, we take cover.
We do have a, you know, a, a pretty robust emergency response plan for the city. We probably haven't updated it for this facility, though. So that'd probably be a good idea. The, the other thing I'll report on is that Sharon and I, and EJ, and Kyle had a meeting with U.S. Census Bureau. This was a meeting that was requested by Congressman Fishbox's office to address the census situation and account specifically with what we believe was the undercount of Ward 1. And so we kind of went through, and I think there was general acknowledgement that, yes, the, a census day occurring during a pandemic, when the university had sent their students away, probably resulted in an inaccurate count. Now, correcting that becomes more complex, and there's really two routes that, you know, Kyle's taking the lead on, along with EJ and Sharon, to, you know, work with the Census Bureau, and they identified a person who would be the person that we would work with on two avenues of remedy. One would be the normal appeal process that they have. But then concurrent with that is an option for a recount. And that recount can be done on as large or as small of a, a reporting area as we would choose. So for instance, if we said we want a recount of Ward 1, of course, it would be at our expense. But they would do that, and then that result then would be from the point of that date of that recount, that would be the effective date. They don't, aren't going back to census date. Or we could have it even more, more restricted than that. So for example, the student dormitory population is reported by roster in a group quarters report, and that's when we, we've talked about that, instead of 385, there was 49. We could request, the way I understood it, and Kyle, and EJ, and Sharon, you can correct me, we could request a recount of the group quarters and pick a date, like September, for that's when we want to recount the group quarters re, report for Ward 1. And that could be done, and that would certainly be, we don't know cost, but that would certainly be less expensive, because you're not involving enumerators that would be going out and canvassing all the properties in Ward 1. The downside is that, you know, it doesn't address the off-campus student population, which likely were gone, but it would address the on-campus population. So, so I wanted to report, that's where
Post-Community Services Board meeting, and we hope, I think the mayor is in agreement with this, that we could bring back some information, maybe get further direction from council in a closed session on land at the next council meeting. So just an update on that.
Okay.
And I'll end it there, because we've got a few more things to cover.
Okay. Jason?
We can talk about the Broadmoor question first, and I don't know, Sharon's been pretty involved on the grant side of it, so she can update that. But on the engineering side of it, we do have some proposals that we've received from a couple engineering firms. So we have that information, and we're ready to work with Broadmoor as the grant becomes approved. It's my understanding that the grant has been submitted and sent, but I don't, I don't know where that's at.
Right.
Dennis Simpson provided a review, and we did meet with Minnesota Housing Finance, their contact. And I apologize, I should have actually updated you individually, since you serve on that board. And they're going to meet with Paul this Thursday, is my understanding.
This upcoming week. They did submit the grant, which included the scope of work. That's kind of the guts of the whole agreement. Who's going to do what, and what's going to be done? And so the, the scope of work has been developed and included, and I believe they hope to have some feedback from the park owner when they meet this upcoming week.
I'm just looking to see that if things are moving, that's good. Great.
Yes, yes, we've had meetings on it.
Another few items real quickly here. Late this afternoon, I got a, an email from MinDOT with a master partnership work order. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to have our mayor execute this. This is a document that essentially sets up the relationship for MinDOT to pay us up to $6,245 for participation in the intersection study at Third and Main. So we've already acted on that. So I feel like we can just work with the mayor and get this signed. Outside of that, College Drive is coming up, and MinDOT's working on a RACE grant application, which is going to be phenomenal. It'll cover a lot of the project costs for, for MinDOT, as well as a handful of costs for the city. So we're really hopeful that gets turned in this week. And I think by June, we should find out. And, you know, that'll be a really big benefit for us. It'll probably save us quite, quite a bit of money. I don't want to throw a number out before we look at it. But anything that's not water and sanitary sewer should be covered. So that'd be really, really great. Met with the DBA, the Downtown Business Association, regarding Third and Lion. And that was really good. We talked about that with the PIT Committee. We'll continue to work with Councilman Schaefer and the PIT Committee regarding that, that whole project as it moves along. You probably saw activity, or have been seeing activity in Independence Park, and that's, that's a good thing. That's MMU doing a lot of work for lighting around the new trails. They've been putting in a lot of lighting. Town and Country Excavating moved in on Monday and took out some trees related to the Four Bay expansion. So things are starting to kick off in the park. That work is damaging the already poor trails. So please bear with us as we work towards replacement, hopefully pretty soon here. So I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions for Jason? Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Block 11, that's been occupying a lot of everybody's time, and you can see tonight's presentations on tax increment financing. Document review is happening. We'll be setting up for closing to transfer that property in the near future. Helena, who, Airport Commission, the owner, Helena, is continuing in the volunteer cleanup program through the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. They have, the Department of Ag has not kicked them into, you know, mandatory cleanup. They're still operating on the volunteer cleanup, and there is an, an additional remediation plan needs to be submitted. So Department of Ag in our office, in my office, is waiting for that. Broadmoor Valley, the housing grant information is proceeding.
Okay. Any question for Dennis? If not, we'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda, which include the administrative brief, the information items, including the building permits, and the listing of upcoming meetings. Any questions on any, any of those items? If not, the next item would be consider adjourning the regular session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So a motion by Jim, seconded by John to adjourn this meeting. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Oh, we'll do this by voice.
It's up.
Okay. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now immediately go into a meeting of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.